The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Edith Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Regional Planning Commission Meeting, September 21st, 2022.
I used to have a store downtown. And general merchandise and hardware. Which Chris inherited everything from the old store, so he's got an entire basement full. He said, John, you will never have to buy another nail ever in your life because I got all of grandpa's stock. Okay, we're calling the Wednesday, December 21st meeting of Planning Commission Order. Robyn, would you please the...
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and all who represent it, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the original.
Mess me up.
That was the original.
I'm kidding.
Okay. To open up a public comment, public comment during the Regional Planning Commission meeting will be for all matters, both on and off agenda, and will be limited to three minutes per person. Commission reserves the right to reduce the timeline, total time allowed for public comment. Comments during discussion items may not be accepted for the general public. May prohibit comment if the content of comments are willfully disruptive of the meeting by being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or mounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of other speakers. So at that point, we will open up to public comment.
At your last meeting, I told you that I have a major concern regarding the drainage coming onto the bad property located on the west side of the railroad tracks on Seventh Street that hasn't been rectified. Erosion is getting worse. There is no curb and gutter across Edie Street and Seventh, and it needs to be addressed. The water draining onto my property has cut and gouged the area between the Nardis and myself. Now it's close to, I'm only to the eight, eight inches to a foot deep. Once I get a hold on what it's going to cost to do the repair, I want to present it to the city and the county. You guys have rules and regulations which are not preparing to. You make people come before you with requests, and one of the items they have to address is proper drainage. That includes the city. That includes others that have improved that area up above there and are impacting me. Mr. Chairman, the state end up has put in some new curb and gutter along Avenue D between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street. They have not, they have not put in proper ADA access or caught ADA access or crossing as required. They're going from bad to worse. You cannot put riprap in a sidewalk area that goes the full length of Fourteenth Street. 2019, I got a business card from a Peter Shaw, state end up, ADA compliance officer. What's he say? Find someone with a wheelchair and sue. Sue the state? I'm not here to sue the state or anybody else. You people have an obligation to rectify the situation, and you haven't done it. No ADA access at the new clinic. Fence heights? Private parking? No, not along side of public street, hasn't been addressed. In regards to Peter Shaw telling me to find someone with a wheelchair, I found one. I've got another one I'm trying to trace down, and then things may happen. Also, on Camden and Great Basin, you have people parking along a very narrow street that was narrowed without a public hearing, and now you've got traffic, oncoming traffic. That needs to be stopped. There's been no direction or no compliance with ADA on the new justice center. Southeast side, brand new building, paid a building inspector, not the gentleman behind me, but the one prior, needs to be brought forward. Recently, you folks approved a easement or abandonment for the printers. I went up there and looked at that, and they did a good job. However, your county, your city clerk is blocking ADA access. So once you cross the printers, it's all blocked off. Can't do that.
Okay.
She needs to address it.
Thanks, George. We'll call you later.
You need to give me some answers here, Mr. Chairman. We're going from bad to worse, and that's not going to cut it. You have an obligation to address the concerns.
We'll catch you later on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. There are public comments.
I was just curious about what's going on with the apartments.
Okay, we will be getting to that.
Okay.
Okay, no further public comments. We'll close that section, and we will open up to discussion for possible action. Approval of a home occupation permit. Applicant is Juliette Kazir, ADA JC saddle cleaning. Property address is 1 Rosewood Co., Ely, Nevada. Is...
Geez, I'm not here.
Hmm.
Try to call her if you'd like.
Yeah.
See.
Yeah.
I did send her an email.
If that's the case, in the meantime, we can table this item and move to the next session of hearings.
Okay.
By the time we finish the next item.
So, are you calling?
Or do you anticipate this having your...
Speaker.
Speaker.
Okay.
I'll text her and see if you want to move on.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold on that agenda item, see if they happen to show up during the meeting here.
Yeah, I would just take a vote to table it until after this item.
Okay.
I'll move to approve table.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So moved in second, and to table this and move on to the next agenda item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's tabled until further notice here. Okay, let's go to... Public hearing, consideration of a proposed application for variance. Applicant Masood Mark Motar had four apartment units that were destroyed by fire, and would like to rebuild them in the same location. The number of units and location of the units would be no longer comply with the current R250 zone residential as units were previously legal slash non-conforming. Property address and/or general location is 195 West 15th Street, Ely, Nevada. Accessory parcel is 001-212-02. Okay. And we're opening up to public hearing on that item.
I just... They want to abolish?
Just state your name and apartments there. Just state your name for the reference.
Alan Morris. I live right behind the apartment at 1914. What is the concern there? I burned down, he wants to rebuild it. You're going to get new ordinance, you're saying, or what's going on? It didn't, it's explained in the paperwork. May?
Okay, do you have a comment on that?
I can offer an explanation.
Okay, yeah.
Craig Peterson, Philly official. So the ordinance states that any time a building is damaged more than 50%, the value essentially it, it needs to be replaced, you know, per the ordinance. So we couldn't rebuild in that exact location for a number of reasons, based on the 50% for the ordinance and on the fact that it's located in the floodplain. So in order to be compliant, they would have to construct a new building that would be elevated to the floodplain level, and that's kind of the primary concern on this. The plan at the moment that's been submitted to me is to have two duplexes next to one another, single level, essentially on the same footprint of the existing building, but separated by five feet in order to eliminate a sprinkler requirement.
Okay, so, so it's already in existence, there's grandfathered into that situation. However, any new construction has got to be comply with the floodplain level.
Correct, that, and because it's a non-compliant, it's legal non-conforming structure for that zone, the variance is required in order to rebuild those units on that lot.
Okay.
So when those units were originally constructed, there may not have been any zoning.
Correct.
Okay, and so when the zoning was put in place, they wouldn't have conformed, but now that we need to rebuild, they're asking for approval of that same variance, I guess?
Essentially, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that makes more sense. Apparently, Mark, Mark Motar's, is he here? Oh, no.
I'll represent him.
Don't represent him.
Is someone representing him?
Okay.
My name is Mike Etter. I rent from Mark, same complex, and I used to work for him, collect rent. I still do work for him. So I'm just here on his behalf to make sure he doesn't get real, really...
Okay.
So what do you need to know? So basically, what he's saying is it's got to be raised up, what, two feet?
Yeah.
What's wrong with that?
Is there anything that's going to be done to address the, the original plumbing on the buildings?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, because I drove by and they, they look pretty rough.
What?
Of the plumbing, the sewer lines and everything else.
Well, yeah, they're exposed now. What the hell do you track?
Yeah, exactly. They look, they look, they look their age.
Well, they will be taken out.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, great. That's what I'm wondering.
Yes, that will be removed, all of it, all of it.
So is that...
That is the, that is the contractor's intent, is once he makes, once he breaks the sewer connection and re, and facilitates the re-hookup, everything else, including old water lines, they go.
Yeah, if there's any discussion, we'll close public comment.
Okay, then...
Anything particular, or?
So let's just...
Otherwise, the floodplain's a big problem? And how about setbacks? Are we going to go back in original footprint?
Okay.
You can ask if there's any other public comment, and then we'll just close this item.
Okay, is there any other, okay, well, hold on for a second.
First, you need to ask, are there any pings? Yes, I'll be pinged.
Okay, is there any more public comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to speak in favor of this as long as it's new construction. The zoning's always been there. Nothing has changed. That property was there before Mr. Motar bought it, and he should be given some consideration. The fact that it's legal non, what's the term?
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming should have been addressed a long time ago, but unfortunately, in this community, it just depends on who you are and what gets done. If this is new, then we should step forward and let it go. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment at this moment? We'll close, close public comment, and we'll open up to discussion of possible action. Approval of the application for variance. Applicant Masood Mark Motar, four apartment units destroyed by fire, would like to rebuild them on the same location. Number of units, the location of the units were no longer comply with the current R250 zone. Units previously legal non-conforming. Property address and/or general location is 195 West 15th Street. Unit address, parcel number is 001-212-02. So, so open that up for discussion for...
Just, I, it wasn't clear, and I don't know that it matters. Are these going to be stick-built or are they brought in as pre-existing units?
Stick-built.
Stick-built?
Okay, raise foundation, stick-built, and up to code, so...
Well, the, yeah, I'd just like to say the fire is very, the fire is very unfortunate, but at least now, you know, he's willing to take care of it, and he's going to have to follow, you know, work with Craig, and I'm in favor of it. I didn't see any problems there. It was there before, and so it's kind of a unique circumstance here, but that's just all I had to say.
We certainly need some new rentals in town.
Okay. Is there any other public comment on this? Any other discussion here at the table? Okay, did I hear motion?
All okay.
I'll, I'll move to approve, that we need help.
Okay, all second. Okay, Leah moved to approve, there are seconds, and that's the approval to, for this approval of variance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any passes?
May I ask a quick question?
What do you have, George?
The talk was, there'll be two units pulled back in, but in looking at the application, and I thought I was wrong initially, but it says all four units will be demolished and will be rebuilt, so there's a little confusion there.
It'll be two duplexes, four units total. Sorry, my, that was mine.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Now, shall we return back to item A, home occupation?
So all I know about it, since I just can't even hold her, is that she's basically just cleaning the saddles.
I think the name says it all.
I mean, I can't imagine there's any stirring, over, dirty outs or any mechanicals that are used, it would bother any neighbors, so that would have been one of the questions I would ask.
Basically, saddle soap and linoleum.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with approving it with her not here, and that would be really the only question, but I think the name says it all. As far as traffic, it's usually a big question, and with saddle cleaning, I don't see, you know...
At the right out of the end of Avenue M, and I drove by that place today, it's pretty nice looking house. Looks like maybe one of the, one side of the garage is going to be used for the purpose of doing that, it's a two-car garage.
No, I have a question. The saddle, is that just the name of the business, or is that, oh, she's cleaning the saddles?
Physically, saddle cleaning.
Okay, oh, both.
Yeah, so name of her business, and that's what she'll be doing, cleaning saddles.
Okay.
Do the substances used present any environmental issues, or, you know, if saddle soap is, will there be a...
I think that would be stretched.
Yeah.
Yeah, having used saddle soap numerous times, it's, no.
It's okay.
And linoleum is...
It's like a conditioner?
No, it's, it's the same natural oils that are found in everything and everybody, you know? Hair follicles, et cetera.
Gotcha.
I don't know anything about saddle cleaning.
Most leather is, is actually, once it's finished out, is dipped in linoleum to restore the, the oils in the leather. So I used to work for a company, Pioneer Tenton, and they used to do backpackers' equipment.
Good, glad you have some knowledge to answer our questions.
Yeah, thank you. If you have some leather cleaner, that's about as knowledgeable. It's probably what you're talking about, but yeah.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have a, had a big tank of linoleum, whenever we finished stuff, we'd, we'd be dipped and drained.
Wealth of knowledge right here.
And, well, we did a lot, we did a lot of outfitting for, for Packers in Montana and Wyoming and so forth like that, and built a lot of huge tents and custom material for Packers, so...
You've done a lot of different various things.
It's called staying alive and paying the rent.
Right. So basically, all I know is she was cleaning her own saddle and decided to just have the thought that she could do that for other people as well, so...
Yeah.
Basically, cleaning her own saddles there anyway, so...
Yeah, maybe she could hook up with Cal Ranch, too, with marketing or whatnot. There's a, a big farming community and whatnot, so I don't see a problem. I would move to approve this home occupation business.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Comment from George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a big problem with this. My concern is on the application, there is no application date. There isn't an amount showed that the fees have been paid prior to it coming before this board. And your number one item says applicant must be legal owner and reside in the home or have permission from owner to run the business. You don't have any of that documentation in your paperwork. I've been screwed over by the city for small things. This is nothing, and you can't treat some people differently than others. If you have rules and regulations, you have to comply. Has the fees paid? Is she the legal owner? If not, does she have permission? You don't know, and I'm not against this individual.
I, I think it would be safe to assume, we have Jennifer here, that all the documentation, the process of that, the student care, I don't think it's...
Your documentation presented at this meeting is not proper, Mary.
So the application is given to me by Robin, who does the business licenses and the law applications, and so she collects the fees downstairs, so she had copied it and given it to me, I'm sure, before she collected the fees and did not write it on my application. Would there be a copy of this business license if the fees were not paid?
No.
So that, does that tell us the fees are paid, or do we need, do we need to verify that? I would think so. She collects the fees at the time she takes the application. Right.
I'm sure the fee is required before the issuance of the business license.
Right, because we do have a copy of that. Right.
Only that the fee has been paid. No license number would be put in there until you folks allow it, but we don't know if they own the property. If they don't, we don't know if they have permission.
The property's on my parents', but I don't know about the permission part, so...
So basically...
In other cases, if the person wasn't at the meeting, they weren't given consideration. Those other people that were turned down have the same right as this individual. You need to show up at the meeting and answer the questions.
Robin did say that her dad was with her, and that they had talked about her doing this saddle business, and that he was joking with her and told her, like, go get a real job or something, and that kind of thing, so her dad is aware of. And I'm on the phone with him, pulling up into his parking lot about a refrigerator, but I didn't think to ask his permission. Yeah, I don't know, do we need to go ahead and table this to get those questions answered, or with your knowledge of who's, if, you know, we're trying... One more time. Okay, okay.
I move to postpone it.
There's a motion on the floor.
You, and if there's a good reason, she's not here, so somebody may have questions.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll say that motion to postpone.
Okay. So we'll, do I hear a motion to postpone this item?
Rod made that motion.
Rod?
To table the item.
To table it? Pardon? You mean a motion to table this, this item, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do I hear, do I hear a second on that?
All second.
Okay. Rod made the motion to table it, and Jenna's made the second on that, so all those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's tabled for next time. And we shall open this up to discussion for possible action. Approval of the minutes from the Regional Planning Commission, meeting held August 17th, 2022.
I was in here, so I didn't make the motion.
I, I went through it, I didn't really see anything. I had a couple. On page one, we have two busses there, or is that just a misprint?
I have those busses.
Let's see.
We've got catch.
Oh, on the present. Yeah. Got it.
And my second one is on page six, and it's down a little below, but it says Leah Brown stated that he made a good point. I think it should have said she.
Have her again, is this...
No, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Says Leah Brown stated that he made a good point. She's talking about Tim Badream, saying that Tim Badream made a good point, so what is he?
That he, Tim Badream made a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I interpreted that wrong.
That's okay.
Okay. Any other glitches? Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, Leah approved, move on to approve. Rod, seconds, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, and we go on to last item, public comment. Period devoted to comments in the public, three minutes, and opening up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you need to crank up the sound system, the two women have trouble coming across. No offense, but you got to speak up. Also, Mr. Chairman, before I start, I'm concerned that in the case of Leah Brown, near her, within a hundred feet, one block, there are more violations. I've not seen any paperwork or any concerns being brought forward by this board. Selective enforcement has got to stop them. You're sitting on this board, you have an obligation. You're not doing it. You're just sitting pretty, baloney. There are people suffering in this community, and that's why we're not going anywhere. Recently, Keith Carson moved a modular home in a trailer park. I had Native American Park, a similar structure on a piece of property that I own, and I had to evict it. I had to return all his rent. Selective enforcement's got to stop it. That was brought in on the 16th of September. Building permit was drawn out on the 21st. Mr. Chairman, the Regional Planning Commission, County Commission, and ED City Council today have not addressed White Pine County or City of ED code violations by members of the Planning Commission, White Pine County Commission, as well as some of the council members. I've given you numerous examples, and I've not gotten any answers. I want some answers. Mr. Chairman, again, I'm requesting complete list of properties and individuals that the city has allowed, or has permitted and allowed to park RVs on the city lots, city streets, where I live in them. At the last city council meeting, Mr. Alworth said, my brother had a RV parked in a... in a lot, used to be a trailer park, plugged in a power which it wasn't. And the so-called tenant or the person living there was spinning brodies in the lot. I talked to Eric Torrio, my neighbor, works for Endo, number two man, no sexting. Selective enforcement and bigotry's got to stop. You guys are a bunch of chumps. If you don't want minorities in this community, just say so. But don't make them pay fees and then have BS allegations put out against them or their family. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting complete list of all parking permits the city and Endo has given out on those, for those along Great Basin Boulevard. Been a year, I've asked for permit. They screwed up my corner, you got one foot drop off my property at seven ten Avenue G. Cause them the liability. Needs to stop. You need to address that. I do a lot of traveling, I've never seen a one foot drop off a person's parking lot. They put an electrical junction box intentionally, six inches in my opinion, above grade. Yet at the copper queen, it's all a grade.
Okay, we gotta wrap it up, George.
Well, you need to wrap it up is right. I want some que, that these questions answered. By the night, you guys need to take a long walk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, with that in mind, I move on to adjournment. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Adjournment. I will move to approve the adjournment.
Leah moved to adjourn, uh, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?
Thirty minutes, guys. That's a...
Very close.
Yeah, no, I took a look at what George was talking about, that whole area from the drainage up to the seventh track.
Okay.
And there is a canyon.
See around.
That last monsoon that we had, pretty low.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's how you know when where the big dips are when it rains.
Yeah, you know where your daughters are.
Huh?
I know, I know where your daughters are.
Oh, yes, do you, yes, yeah. Oh, my gosh, really? Yeah. Oh, that's awesome.
As thick as we could have.
Thank you. Very cool. It's, it's a small room, it's like an...
See ya.
I did, yeah. No, you're good, I didn't mention response.
This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting.